I'm ready, yeah.
Stand for a moment of stock meditation and pledge the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call this meeting the Montague County Commission to Order. It is Wednesday, May 1st, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval through Renata McLeod, our county administrator. Good morning.
Morning, Renata.
Morning. We have four exonerations for 3,407.49 minutes for April 24th, 2024. Vouchers, General County, 59,602.911, 6,516.48. Chestnut Ridge Park, 4,353.23. Camp Muffley, $2,070.59. Mason Dixon Park, 737.32. Long County Center, 451.21. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 4,0573.08. Home confinement, $56. Camp Muffley, 215.19. Mason Dixon Park, 165.33. Long County Center, 694.60. For a voucher total of 79,435.93. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for May 1st, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other fiduciary items?
No.
To the next item on the agenda, which is introduction of employee personnel changes.
Morning.
Morning.
This morning, we're asking permission for the hiring of Ms. Monica Fox as a data entry clerk. This would be a change from a part-time temporary to a full-time position and would replace Susan Schillinger, who had retired a while back. Monica's start date would be today, be full-time benefits eligible.
I apologize, Patrick. I didn't introduce you. Patrick Tenney, Deputy Assessor. For anybody that doesn't know Patrick, do I have a motion to approve the position as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other personnel?
Yes. Circuit Clerk Donna Hydock, she is hiring a part-time individual, $15 per hour, and her start date is effective today.
Move to approve the employee as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any others?
No, that's all, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. We'll now open the public comment session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise their hand, come forward, provide their name and address.
Good morning, Louis Scottle, 1444 Saratoga Avenue.
Good morning.
Commissioners, this is an ongoing battle, but I, after requesting something in writing that states what cases were educated to lead you to deny the motion for hearing. And I've always been led to believe that the county commission is to protect the estates from waste while there's a conflict of interest of two wills or whatever kind of conflicts of matters that represent in anybody's estate of a deceased person. I found that in this case, on April 8th, 2014, the circuit court made it clear that the will that this county commission, not you personally, but the county commission in whole, admitted the 2006 will to probate during a will contest, which in fact was in violation of the West Virginia Code, but yet wasn't proven until March 7th of 2014 to be an invalid and improper will under the influence by my cousin, John Scottle, which was supposed to reinstate this estate of all the assets and properties that Arthur P. Scottle was in control of at the time of his death. This has never occurred, and this county commission, not you personally, but ordered the administrators of the 2006 will to return the estate to Arthur P. Scottle at the time, denying me the right to become the executor of the estate according to the proper will that is administered or was put on record and was admitted to probate on April 8th, 2009. I should have been appointed, but wasn't, not knowing what I was legally to do or whatever, because again, there is so much controversy in this state, that's why I filed this motion for hearing. This motion for hearing, if you'd have read the nine pages and the exhibits that I was showing you, shows that Keith Pappas was stayed. His administration was stayed September of 2010, which the records don't even have it listed as that he was to take back to the court his evaluation of which was the proper will to probate, which he failed to do in Judge Claude's court, and it proceeded to trial with the will contest. There's so much damages here. I understand that it is chaotic for you to understand because you're only getting one side of the story, I believe. I've never been allowed to tell my side of the story. I've only been represented by everybody else to tell my side of the story, so to speak, but it's been ignored, the facts. I was Uncle Art's administrator for his businesses. He appointed me before he died in all his resolutions for his business to run them. I have a complete understanding because I ran his business on the day he died and know what he had, and the way they've produced this estate is so far out of whack, I don't even understand how to get to you unless we have a motion of hearing and I can show you in detail from day one how much the estate was worth, which was over 1.5 to 2 million dollars, how much properties were listed at the time of his death, how much income was being brought in at the time of his death, how much the banks were denied by the administrators of the 2006 will to not even make the payments, that I had to buy two deeds of trust from the banks that I've never been paid for to this day that is still open. And yet, the county clerk's office is telling me that I'm supposed to file annual reports according to what has already been produced, and that has to stop. I need more time to file an actual report of what this estate is actually meant to be probated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead and close the public comment session of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visor Burrows Association, I assume, and you're going to present your annual report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity. I brought with me Catherine Carter and Stella Henley. These ladies are our Destination Development Coordinators, and we're here to present to you our 2023 annual report, which you have a copy. Inside that annual report, as an insert, is actually a copy of the letter that is evidence of our 2023 state compliance with the CVB Oversight Regulation, where we've been accredited since 2006 every year. Our financial reports and our audit, all of those things, we meet all, exceed actually, all the standards that are required, but this is your official notice of what we have produced and are in the process of presenting to all of our municipalities and counties throughout the area that we serve. So we can't thank you enough for your support. We have all types of things going on, but that's probably the shortest report you're ever going to get from me.
Well, Susan, I will ask you if you could just go through a couple of highlights.
Sure. We had a banner year. We are back and are exceeding our pre-pandemic levels. We did get a unqualified or clean audit, which is not in that report, but we are audited every year. That information is at the end of the report. We continue to exceed the best practices as far as there is a rule of 40-40-20, 40% of our funding to be spent on marketing, which is advertising and sales, and 40% on salary is the baseline, and then 20% on administration. We exceed those percentages, so we are well above that in marketing. Our payroll is much less than that, and then administrative is even lower than that benchmark. So we are, we're very blessed to be a leader, not only in the region, but in the state. We just completed our tourism summit, which we started last year as our first, and this year, we just had our second. That will be an annual undertaking as well as these ladies are about to have their grant workshop that we've listened to our partners, asked what they need, and then we try and connect those dots. That's actually a regional one Monday?
Yeah, Monday.
Yeah, Monday. So it's, we have how many attendees right now?
There's 60 attendees.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and it keeps growing. We did one about six or so months ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
About 80, I thought.
Yeah, there was 80 that attended the last one. So, you know, we try and bring in all these opportunities. We're working on whatever the state is providing through the tourism and economic development partnerships that now exist. We're working on one, actually with Mylan Park and the KOA, on a tourism development grant for sales tax that offsets some of that development costs because that's an easy project. You have to have more than 50% of the users be out-of-town users. So it doesn't apply. It has to be tourism, but, and then we just applied for the workforce grant, and the workforce grant through tourism is going to train all of our staff with Destination International. I think we'll be the first one in the state that will have all of our staff certified through Destination International, and we're working with the two new CVB directors in Marion County and Clarksville that are brand new, so we included them in the grant. So we're trying to raise the bar because we already, I was in a meeting this morning with YCF, and as we're leaving, I said, "I'm going to see the county commission," and they said, "One more night, one more dollar." I said, "Yeah, you know what? It's working, folks. It's working." So we thank you for your support. Couldn't be doing it without you.
One of the things that I'm always interested in is your return on investment. Do you have any?
We have an update on a PAYMCA event that's hot off the press. Joe Vasakia, our operations manager, he was going over, because, you know, through the Tourism Advancement Fund. And we'll get that updated, and then we'll come in and do a separate presentation on that. But we get a, the process, you get a budget, and then it goes to the review committee, and, you know, we make sure the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, so you're all, you are promoted through your logo as well as ours through all of the event advertising and all that sort of thing. And then we get a post-event budget breakdown. That PAYMCA, it's a state championship, folks, so it's Pennsylvania, the best of the YMCA swimmers come to Morgantown, West Virginia for their state competition. That event standalone, and I think we, y'all know, I think it was like maybe $10,000 or $15,000 that the Tourism Advancement Fund put into it. It wasn't enormous. I mean, not that that's not a lot of money, but it wasn't like it was one of these $50,000 requests. But based on direct event spend, which is event for the facility, hospitality, food and beverage, safety, ambulance, all those things that are directly associated with the event, plus the room nights that we're able to capture and quantify, which is not an exact science. We do call-arounds, old-fashioned, "Hey, how many rooms did you have?" That event alone had a direct spend of over $800,000 for that one event, just that one event. So when I'm talking with Secretary Ruby, and she said, "You're an events destination. We know no one gets up in the morning and says, 'Hey,'" very few people say, "I'm coming to North Central West Virginia on vacation." But we are the number-one events destination, and we are also day trippers. That has been shown in evidence of the state's data. They do, they have a, Tourism Economics is the firm that they've switched to, and they're like, "Yeah, you all, you have people that are coming and going and coming and going." Because of the retail that we have, you know, that 79 corridor, people are coming. How many, I mean, not everybody has a Bass Pro Shops. Not everybody has a Target and a Sam's and all the Walmarts and the, just the home repair places that we have between Lowe's and there's what, a Home Depot and all Menards. I mean, it's a, people are driving in and driving out. So we embrace being an events destination. That's why we're always trying to work that one more night, one more dollar. So.
When is the Junior Olympic?
The USA Junior Nationals?
Yes.
That's in, it starts the end of June and rolls over. It's a 10-day. That's going to be a biggie, folks.
Yeah.
As far as ROI. And we were kind of waiting till we got through that one to come back and give you a snap, an update, a snapshot, but it ends, it starts the middle of the last week of June and then runs through July.
Right.
It goes from June to July.
Okay.
So anyways, we have so many things going on. Heck, last weekend, there was, I stopped counting it. I think it was eight things at one, frankly, at Mylan Park last weekend, between the dog show and the baseball and track meet, and we had the Blue Goal game, you know, here, and Mountaineers were at home. I went to the baseball game Friday night, and someone says, "Hey, I use your Mountaineer deals. I love those coupons." I was like, "Sweet." You know, so it's working. It takes a village. We got other things we'll be rolling out, but yeah, it's a very wise investment. I just wish we could get other, and people are getting one. They're getting it. They're starting to understand. It is, it is something that pays back multiples for whatever the investments are. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a shout-out?
Report.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Next item on the agenda is grants. Colleen Kuhn, our Commission Office Manager. Good morning.
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 Okay, so the first, I request reimbursements. The first one is for the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,693.44. The next one, the next several for the Saki Purpose Area 3 grant. This first one's for December in the amount of $1,208.50. January in the amount of $13,358.44. February in the amount of $11,837.50. March in the amount of $12,779.51. And then Saki Grant Purpose Area 3 in the amount of $9,792.50.
Move for the President to sign the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, correspondence?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. I have an email. Well, I had a conversation, a meeting last week with Georgia Lilly, who's on the Health Department Board of Health, and George, Georgia's term comes up in May, no, in June, and he wanted to let me know personally that he wished to not be reappointed and to let somebody else take the reins. George has provided a lot of years in service to this community, so I, he's a great asset to the Health Department Board of Health, but I certainly honor his wishes. And he did follow up with me with an email that he sent to the Board of Health indicating that he did not wish to have his term reinstated. So I asked the administrator, and she provided me the detail as far as any appointments, what parameters they had to fit, and basically, we can appoint someone from any party as long as they reside in the Central or Eastern Districts. So I provided that guidance to Anthony DeFaleese, who's the CFO of the Health Department, so that they start the, start the process of looking for replacements. So I just want to make sure that that's in correspondence. Do you need that for the?
Sure.
I also received, being out of the country, I still receive several emergency phone calls from the Chairman of the Board of Bartlett House, Nick DiMedici. I asked him to write in an email and put down, writing his concerns about Bartlett House, which I did refer to the other commissioners, and also I was told to send it to Emily Moserelli, City Council. So that is something that we passed on and said that we weren't even meeting till even today.
Okay. We'll need to provide a copy to the clerk for the meeting, so. All right, any other correspondence? Welcome back, Tom.
Thank you.
Should have said, "Beginning in a, beginning in a..." Unfinished business, we have none. New business. To consider for approval, requisition number 26 for the Series 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase 1 Project Fund.
The requisition total is $347,563.50. We have $36,336 that is going to be paid to, directly to the developer en route properties for electrical service at the industrial park, and then the remainder, $311,227.50, we pay to third-party payees, Adrian Enterprises, the Thrasher Group, Mills Group, and Anderson Excavating.
Do I have a motion to approve requisition number 26, the Series 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase 1 Project Fund?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of request for disbursement of $19,000 from the County Fire Protection Fund for the Star City Volunteer Fire Department.
What it is, I guess, on a?
Yeah, we had an email letter of support from the Volunteer Fire Association last week, and Star City followed up with the actual request. The, so if we approve this 19K, it would be payable to the Montague County Volunteer Fire Department Association for the repair of the Star City fire engine, so Star City would get their payment from the Volunteer Fire Association. So do I have a motion to approve that funding? $19,000 payable to Montague County Volunteer Fire Association for the repair of the Star City Volunteer Fire Department fire engine.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye. Quick note on that, as far as I'm aware, this is one of the first times that our volunteer fire department group has endorsed a single fund for, or a fund request for a single agency, a single fire department. So it just shows, goes to show that the group's working together and toward the common goal of making all volunteer fire departments upgrade their systems, and hopefully it leads to more communication and a better, or just a continued working relationship between the departments. So we were very happy to see that, at least I was, that the association came forward and requested funds just for one of the, was it 13 groups?
12.
12, Oz County, City of Morgantown.
13th County Association. And just to be clear, there are two funds, the all counties funds, that's account 4144356800, and has a current balance of $180,608, and then there's the fire fee fund, which is account 4144356801, has a balance of $209,749. This, absent any objection, I would recommend that we pay this out of the 56800.
That's no vote.
Yeah, that's your department.
We have a, did we?
We voted on it. Yeah, we did. I just commented afterwards, out of line, sorry. Well, out of order, I say.
That's actually a rarity that you.
Consideration to approve a request by Pleasant Valley Public Service District to relocate funding previously approved for repair of a fire hydrant on Lazzell Union Road.
Move to approve the request as presented?
Second.
And just for clarity, we approved funding for repair of a hydrant on Lazzell Union Road. They were able to obtain parts and actually fixed it internally. And then they had it, over the winter, they had another fire hydrant that broke. Let me see how many times we can say "fire" in this meeting.
Just don't scream it.
That broke, which was the exact amount, the exact match of the same fire hydrant, so it would require the same parts. So they're just asking to reapply the funding that they've already deposited, deposited check to this other fire hydrant. So I applaud them for being completely transparent and bringing it to us, and I, we all heartily agree. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There, now we all heartily agree. Next item on the agenda is consideration to approve the release of a request for qualifications for the architectural services and the completion of a facilities assessment and master plan of the Lockside Road complex.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is just a project we've been mulling around for quite a while, and it's great. It's our K9 Adoption Center, our motor pool, our maintenance department. What else is over there?
Litter control, impound, IT.
All of those, so this.
So we have space issues with a couple of those departments, and rather than just piecemeal and start down the road, we're looking at a comprehensive assessment of the whole site and what would be the best use to improve the facilities over there. So this is a request for qualifications. We're asking for vendors to come in and tell us their qualifications, and then we'll have, those that respond will be eligible to respond to a request for proposal, assuming we get multiple entities that reply. So this is just the first step of the procurement process. It's basically pre-qualifying a vendor to do that service because we're not really sure how many people out there could do it. So, did I miss anything?
Well, just for clarification, there's two options in the RFQ.
One would just be, the phase one option would be just to do the qualifications and then select an architectural firm. The second would be to be able to negotiate with that firm without having to go out to bid again. So that's, that's the only clarification I would make.
Okay, thank you. Do we know that? So we have a, did we vote? I'm losing track of the vote. First and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Just to make sure. All right. Consideration to move the county commission meeting scheduled for June 19th, 2024 to June 18th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Clarification, this June 19th is June 19th, which is a federal holiday. It is not currently a state holiday. The governor usually, they haven't written that into statute yet, so every year, we have to have the government, or the governor proclaim that a holiday. We assume that he will. We're being proactive in moving the day out of, even if he doesn't, out of deference to the federal holiday on June 19th. So we're just moving it a day forward, same time and place, 10 o'clock Eastern Standard Time here at the Montague County Chambers, 10 o'clock a.m. And again, that way, we're just, if there's a last-second announcement that it becomes a holiday, then we have all this scurrying to do, and this allows the clerk's office, everybody, the planner around that meeting being changed, so we'd rather do it now instead of wait. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any other new business? Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Mayor Lewis. Hello.
Come on there.
Mayor Patty.
I'm here representing Town of Granville, obviously. I wanted to give you, or in the public, an update on our traffic signal project. So the bid was awarded to SDI Specialty Groups out of Bridgeport. They're the group that also does a lot of installation for the Department of Highway, so they're very knowledgeable about what we need. You know, the original bid amount, when I came to you originally was, and I forgot my figures, it was 1.5 million plus, and through value engineering, we've gotten that estimate down to a little under the 1.1 million. There are a couple items that we're still negotiating to try to, we're doing our due diligence. I did hear back from the Department of Highways. They are working to see if we can either purchase or borrow some poles to expedite the project.
Be great.
So we should see some movement soon, and we're excited about that, and just wanted the public to know where we stand with that.
Do we have an ETA on construction start date, or are you still too early to tell?
Well, I think it's going to depend too if we can put our hands on those poles, but I sent out an additional email yesterday. I'm waiting to hear back because I haven't heard from them for a couple of weeks, but I didn't get a no.
I want to congratulate also your department because you brought it down from 1.5 to 1.1, and also those polls. and also, those polls can really expedite.
Yes.
Everything. So, really appreciate Granville really pushing this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have anyone else?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Alex Hall, there are control officer for the county. I just want to make the public aware, after we met a few weeks ago, I worked with I T to get that form on our website. So, now, to report and abandon dilapidated property, you just go to the montaguecounty.gov, down to departments, and there's a complaint form on there, kind of lists out every piece of information that we need, and there's access on there to either call the assessor's office or to just use the G I S online to get the parcel information. Just wanted to let the public know, let you all know that it's up and running, and look forward to it.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Alex.
Do we have anyone else? Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Tom, tell us about your week.
Ah, it was, it was a great week. Very pleased, left almost Wednesday night and Thursday. While in Miami, we went to board the plane to go to Turks and Caicos, and they said, "Oh, we might have a minor problem," which was mechanical. So, I lost all Thursday, but I kept thinking to my wife, "It was much better to have the act, the mechanical problem before we got on." So, so I was really pleased with that. We celebrated our 41st anniversary, and the irony is, as I walked up to the bar to order something, someone behind me goes, "I know that voice," and turned around, and there were four families from the Cheat Lake era Summit era that were, were at the place. I thought, you know, try and get away from everyone, but it was really nice to have, have them there, and we didn't talk politics for five days, and my wife stole my phone. So, again, it was fantastic, and I really appreciate that, you know, was able to get away. And to come back and just want to make sure, people, it's important. We have 10 days of early voting. We have four levies. We have bond. We have magistrates. We have judges, and this is the one time, it's really important that citizens can have a say in the local elections, and I do hope they get out and vote. So, thank you. It was, it was good.
Yes, thank you for mentioning the early voting. I was going to note on that. I will be leaving here after our, our meeting with one of our employees after this meeting. The first thing I'm doing is going to the mall, the old mall and voting. So, I look forward to exercising my constitutional right and duty to, to, to get those vote, that vote put in. Had a board meeting last night for M C R, which is the group that owns the old Ramada insight, Hazel's House of Hope. Just a standard board meeting. We are closely monitoring the situation with Bartlett House as well as, as we are the landlord up there, and looking for possible solutions to try to do something to keep that, to keep that service going up at that site, but nothing yet to report really on that. I was in on a phone call with Commissioner Bloom this morning with a representative from D O H, and the, and the, we're happy to report the work on Broad, Rockway is proceeding rather soon. So, you'll start to see paving trucks and construction happening on that road, thank goodness. So, yeah, knock on wood. That's been one of the most frequently called-about items that I, we probably have all received calls on over several years, so hopefully, it's a fix that lasts for a while. On a, on a happy note, we, if you listen closely to Commissioner Bloom after every time we say the pledge, he says, "Beat Pitt." Well, W V U beat Pitt like, well, slapped them around pretty good last night. So, it was awful fun in their hometown to, to. And congratulations to Grant Hussey, who set the all-time home run record for W V U last night, West Virginia native, Parkersburg, I believe. So, and then, our calendar is out for a music series at our parks. We have copies of them. I saw on Colleen's desk, so if someone wants one to put up in their business or office, let us know. We're happy to provide that. There's a lot of great acts, and they're very popular series at, at both Camp Muffley, or sorry, Camp Mason Dixon and Chestnut Ridge. There's this concert series happening, so that's all I've got.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Since our last meeting, related to reelections, last Wednesday, all three commissioners participated in election testing up at the mall, and everything went well. As Commissioner Bloom and Ornette both mentioned, today is the start of early voting. You can't complain if you don't vote. So, well, people still will, but obviously, obviously, you hear a lot of complaining, but only 20, 30% of people vote. But, please, please get out and exercise your constitutional right. Last Thursday, we had the Mylan Park Board Meeting. After that, I had a broadband tag up, and as I mentioned earlier, I had a call with Georgia Lilly from the Board of Health. Friday, I had another broadband call, and then I had a call in the afternoon with a constituent. Monday was the M H S Girls' final home game. Congratulations to Gwenny. It's been a wonderful year. We followed that up with last night going to East West Stadium, where they went toe-to-toe with Fairmont West for, for a good while. The score ended up 15-9. They lost, but it was actually a lot closer than that, and they let Fairmont know that the Morgantown Girls' team has gotten a lot better this year, and they're actually number three in the state. U H S has won. They incorrectly said that the game with, Fairmont was one, but Fairmont, or U H S beat Fairmont. So, playoffs start Friday for M H S Girls' team, and it's, it's been a fun year. Today's a regular day. Friday, we have staff reports. The administrator and I have a, hopefully, a productive meeting with U S I, our insurance brokers, and I have a broadband tag up. I, Tom, congratulations. More to Wendy, 41 years.
Yeah.
I'm glad you got away for a little bit of a break. And again, I sincerely wish you'd, congratulate you two on your anniversary. That's all I have.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.